Good afternoon and welcome. This is the October 7th, 2024 work session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to introduce our new deputy city clerk Hannah Long. She's been in the position for two full weeks and she is doing a fantastic job. We can give it up for Deputy Clerk Hannah. Hannah, we appreciate you. It's been a good two weeks and glad we got to keep you in the city. Hannah came over from our fire department. So, thank you Hannah and hope it'll be a fun ride for you. Councilmember Michelle Gregory would not be in attendance today. We do ask you to keep her family, in specific, her son Nick, in your thoughts and prayers. He is, of course, battling his ongoing illness. So, we ask you to keep their family and, of course, Councilmember Gregory in your thoughts. There will be a special legislative session on Monday, October 21st, following the regularly scheduled work session at 4:30. Also, Monday, October 28th, the meeting has been canceled. Public notices have been sent out for both those changes to the meeting schedule. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the doors to your right. Proceed to the right and down the stairs. If the hallway is blocked, exit to your left, down the hall, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we do ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. Public comments will be heard after each work session item. If you plan to speak, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to the city clerk. And we do ask if you plan to speak on any of the topics to please grab a form and fill it out at this time. That way, it makes it a smooth transition and we know that you are planning to speak. We'll pivot to our first item on the agenda, which is a SWIFT presentation by the Mobile Integrated Health Advisory Council. Folks, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good. If you all could just introduce yourselves and your relation to the advisory council.
Sure. I'm Kat Rogers. I'm Director of Community Health Initiatives at Title Health and I co-chair the SWIFT Mobile Integrated Health Advisory Council with Chief Frampton.
And Rob Frampton, Fire Chief, City of Salisbury, also co-chairman of the council with Kat. So, you've probably heard me talk about SWIFT before in some of the presentations, but we really wanted to come in and just kind of make it a little bit more known. We've stood up this council about six months ago or so. And what it is, it's a collection of over 20 healthcare and public safety leaders from throughout Salisbury and Wycomica County. We made this similar presentation about two weeks ago to the county council. We're just trying to get the word out there about what SWIFT does and about the relationships that exist between Title Health, ourselves, and all of our allied partners throughout the community. So, again, thanks for the time today. Let's see if this works. So, a little bit what we're going to do, go through some, we just did our welcome and introductions, talk a little bit about the team, provide you a background, tell you about what SWIFT 1.0, which was our original version, was, and then SWIFT 2.0 and where we're going with things. So, we'll try to tackle that over the next few minutes. So, the SWIFT program and MIH in general is all about relationships and partnerships. And what you'll learn here is all about those different players that are in this arena as we go through this. So, really, you know, from the Salisbury Fire Department, we have a paramedic coordinator, a SWIFT coordinator, and we also have a community paramedic that works for us full-time in that job. And then Title Health employs the nurse practitioners portion of it and along with some of the other specialties there, the, you know, community wellness coordinator.
Yeah. So, just in addition to the nurse practitioner that's working with the paramedic, we have a very innovative model because we have a truly interdisciplinary team and we look at the behavioral health factors. So, we have social workers, we have community health workers trying to address the social risk factors of these patients and individuals, and they work together with registered nurses as well. So, the nurse practitioner and the paramedic, they go into the home for this original model of SWIFT, do the assessment, and essentially develop a treatment plan. And that might include social care coordination, it might include medical care, but it's all coordinated across all of those disciplines and then with community resources.
What we're really after is the 360-degree concept. Traditionally EMS was you call 911, we haul you to the hospital, we forget about you. This program really brings everybody into the partnership to get the patient back into the world, get, you know, a roof over their heads, get them employed if that's what they need or in the right healthcare. So, it's really that 360-degree approach is kind of what we're after. So, Kat's going to talk a little bit about the timeline of our SWIFT program, our MIH program.
So, it initiated really with David Fitton spearheading it back in 2016. A group of people came together with a Care First grant and got it going. By 2017, it was recognized by MEMS for their protocol and then continued to receive grant funding. So, this has been grant-funded for a number of years. It is no longer grant-funded. We got a second award. We've been recognized nationally and internationally for the work that this team has done. And in 2022, we launched this, what we call SWIFT 2.0 or MDCN, Minor Definitive Care Now. So, the original version of SWIFT, we worked with EMS and the fire department to identify people who were frequent callers of the 911 system and/or visiting the emergency department and then looked at that report outreach to those people, went into their homes, assessed them, and tried to meet their needs. By 2022, we evolved to continue doing that because those are very complex needs, ongoing care coordination, longitudinal care needed. But now, when people call 911, the team is stationed at the fire department and they're listening for those low-acuity calls. And they are actually able to respond in real time to those calls and the ambulance can go back into service. And then we've added additional services. So, with this past couple of years, we've been able to start to do some home modifications and look at the safety of homes, partner with Habitat, partner with Chesapeake Housing Mission, build ramps for some of these patients. We've brought a pharmacist into it to help do medication management with patients who have lots of medications. And most recently, we started to do referrals to home-based physical therapy. So, we're trying to pull even more disciplines in. So, I was just talking about the original SWIFT program. So, this just gives you in your notes what that involves and how they go into the homes. They do a very comprehensive, as Chief Frampton said, a 360-degree assessment and then connect to community-based referrals. So, this is an example of a success story, but we could talk about success stories all day. But this particular individual had a history of schizophrenia and nobody could really engage with him. And it took the SWIFT team continuously going to this individual, building that trust before he could really get engaged with his own care and manage his medications and his condition. So, this is one example. Another example is a 90-year-old veteran in the area who had cognitive impairment that the team was able to work with, again, help get his medication under control and so that he could better manage his health. And the stories go on and on, but just wanted to give you a snapshot of the kind of patients they're working with. And then really briefly, I won't dwell on this. Again, you have the notes in the presentation, but the data that we see comes from CRISP, which is the Health Information Exchange System. It allows us to put the panel of patients into this analytics platform run by the state. And then we can see three, six, nine, 12 months before what their utilization was, before the SWIFT team intervened, and then those time periods after the SWIFT team intervened. So, as you can see, it's always trending down. So, blue is before the SWIFT team intervened, three months before, six months, 12 months before the SWIFT team intervened. And then the orange is after the SWIFT team intervened. So, this is a rate by 10 patients, but the point of it is you can see clearly in the graph with the blue and the orange that there's always a reduction in, this is for ED visits. And then the next one is in inpatient observation admissions, always trending a reduction because of the SWIFT intervention. And then it also reduces charges. So, this is our only way really to show for this SWIFT 1.0 model how we're reducing the costs of healthcare, which is really helping with the cost of the entire system, including the 911 system.
So, the next step, kind of where SWIFT has gone, is the MDCN, as Kat alluded to. And what that is, a paramedic and nurse practitioner partnered up. Right now, they're operating out of a utility vehicle or suburban. And this is currently only happening in Salisbury, even though this MIH program is county-wide and actually reaches out down to Smith Island as well at times. But, and what they're doing is the low-acuity calls. So, we have different levels of Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, and Delta. Charlie, Delta, and Echo are the serious ones. Alpha and Bravo are low-acuity, so slips, trips, falls, lacerations, things like that. This crew goes on with a transport ambulance. The only reason the transport ambulance still has to go is because that's the Maryland protocol, but we're working to get that so that that resource can stay available. And we're just sending the nurse practitioner and the community paramedic there. They get in there, they assess the patient, see if the patient, if they do need to be transported, then they can always use that transport unit if it's a simple treat and release, or they can provide IV fluids, they can do immunizations. We have relationships with a mobile x-ray company that's there usually in 30 minutes or less if somebody's rolled their ankle or something, we can quickly do an x-ray. They can draw blood in the field and perform lab work right in the field. So, again, kind of an extension of the emergency room, trying to keep people out of the emergency room and from tying up transport EMS units. You know, one of the highlights is currently, this is the only operational program of this kind in the entire state of Maryland that has a community paramedic and a nurse practitioner partnered up. There's others starting to come on board, but right now, this is the only one that's up and running. And I mentioned some of the services that they provide, and those just continue to grow, but it's just another extension of our SWIFT program. You've seen some of the, this is a snapshot for last fiscal year with a lot of the work that they did. Again, first year of this program really being up and running, you know, 607 calls, a reduction in ED visits of over $330,000. So, that's the hospital really seeing the bang for their buck there. And then additionally, we have an MOU there that we can, you know, use this program for our own people within the fire department. So, we're providing some services to them, which helps reduce our overtime and the sick hours used, things like that. So, you know, those numbers, and that's all in your packet there with you. So, some changes and improvements that you're seeing, the mayor's aware because I send them some statistics about how often we go to nursing homes and, you know, skilled nursing facilities in our fire district. Well, we have taken a proactive approach and we've reached out to them. So, we have certain agreements with John B. Parsons Home, Bay Harbor, which was formerly Genesis, where we're actually going out and this MDCN team can go out there and actually make the decision that we don't need to transport that patient, or if they only need blood work done, we can draw their labs or things like that that we're getting unnecessary 911 calls for. So, that's kind of an extension of this program as well. Did you want to talk about the neurology and?
Yeah, just what, as Title Health continues to grow, its joint ventures and partnerships, it's allowing us to have different relationships with specialists in the area so that we're able to get these patients in to see those specialists. And we're also building this relationship with the Crisis Stabilization Center because we're seeing such a growing need of people with behavioral health conditions needing to get in with a provider there, too.
And then we're working on actually doing whole blood, first off as a 911 service, but also whole blood and blood transfusions in the field as part of MDCN. So, again, just an extension of that. So, pretty advanced stuff going on out there. A little bit more back during COVID-19, the pandemic, they actually administered one of the first home monoclonal antibody infusions in the field. So, they're always on the cutting edge of things. And a little bit about the recognition they've gotten there. 2022, they were second place for Title Health Chairman Award. 2023, the Rural Health Program of the Year by the Maryland Rural Health Association. And they've made national presentations in 2023 and 2024 at the MIH Summit, as well as several peer-reviewed articles. An extension of that relationship also, I'm not sure if it's on the next page, but is we have, we are actually part of a nurse practitioner clinical rotation and we also have part of Title Health's residency program.
Yeah, our general medical education. So, we now have medical residents doing a community health rotation. We have the nurse practitioner students. We also have Salisbury University nursing students who do a community health rotation with this department and public health students, too, from SU.
And anesthesiologist was riding today.
Yeah, anesthesiologist.
So, a little bit of everything, getting them to expose to the community and the environment that they're going to be working in.
Yeah. So, there's, so as I mentioned before, for all these years, there's been at least some grant funding keeping this going, but now those costs are being absorbed really by the fire department and the city and Title Health. So, there are opportunities to maybe not generate revenue, but offset the costs of some of these. So, we are exploring those, looking at relationships with maybe managed care organizations, health insurance companies that could help support this because it could be benefiting their members. Currently, we've started to bill for some of the nurse practitioner services. So, that's where we are with trying to keep this long-term.
And one of the big themes that was at the MIH Summit a few months ago was that these are cost savings and value-added programs. They're not revenue generating, but they're cost-decreasing. So, that's kind of how we need to look at this when, you know, when we're talking to you and we're talking to the county and, you know, Kat's talking to Title Health leadership, is it's not about the dollar that might be coming in, but it's about the cost reduction and the value that's added to the community and the vulnerable populations that they're really reaching out to.
So, just moving forward, we want to continue to grow our partnerships, partner with more organizations that can bring services to these individuals, help people get control of their health. But we also want to do more along the lens of behavioral health and maybe expanding our services by doing more in the telemedicine and telehealth space and then continue to work toward financial sustainability for the long-term because we want to continue to provide the service to our residents.
So, that's kind of the end of our presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer any for you or give you any more information.
Well, first of all, thank you all again for highlighting that. Again, this is one of those programs and again, we love being the first and just, you know, this is a really cool concept. So, thank you all for highlighting some of the great things that this is doing. I only have one question. And so, what either can you speak to or, I guess, are we doing any specific outreach to, you mentioned, you just mentioned vulnerable populations. So, to, you know, any vulnerable populations, minority groups, you know, folks that are considered disabled or disability groups or, you know, those advocates or leaders in those groups, are you, do you have connections or anything you can speak to that would be, you know, with those populations that, because I can see this being a really good benefit is but to those populations, but if we don't have, I guess, maybe access to translating if it's, you know, a minority population that is, that doesn't speak English as a first language. So, this is, that's my question to you is, are we doing that currently? Do you see the need for it and is something we can do to help with that?
Well, we're plugged in with the Local Health Improvement Coalition and we have a Health Equity Resource Community Grant. So, we have a coalition for that, that, so that we're connected to a number of different groups through those organizations. And then the People's Community Alliance, which is the spin-off of the Lower Shore Vulnerable Populations Task Force. So, all of those individuals, we stay connected to and then we invite other, we mentioned fire department, law enforcement, Title Health, the health department, but we're also in touch with social services as part of this advisory council and taking that input. The patients that we're seeing is based on their utilization. So, we're not targeting any one group, but because there are those disparities, so for example, hospital encounters for diabetes or hypertension or mental health, there's a greater proportion of Black residents who have hospital encounters for those conditions. So, without targeting a particular population of people, they're ending up as our panel of patients by virtue of their utilization. So, we're improving access by taking that approach. But as far as the language barrier, because that continues to grow, we work very, very closely with our Haitian partners, including Haitian providers or nurse practitioners, the Haitian Development Center, Rebirth, on trying to understand what the needs are and the trust of being able to go and educating what's the right place, right type of care in the right setting at the right time and understanding what their needs are. So, currently, we're using language interpretation. We have video capabilities as well as just audio. And so, that's how we're doing interpretation in real time in the field. When it's a scheduled visit, we can take an interpreter with us to a.
We have, one of our staff at the fire department is fluent in Spanish, so she's gone out a few times with SWIFT when we, when there's a known, hey, we've got an appointment at 10 o'clock type deal for interpretation. And if you've noticed any of our social media stuff, everything that we're putting out now is in English, Spanish, and Haitian Creole to try to attack everybody, to try to meet the needs for that.
Thank you. Yeah, sure. Councilwoman DeShiel.
Regarding the number, in your presentation, you said you had 100 enrolled in 2020. Does that 100, is that your focus or have you added to that? And once someone is identified as needing your services, do you, do they exit out of the program at some point or how do you manage that situation?
So, over the, over the time we've worked with well over 200, 200 to 300 individuals, what you see in that data where it says 100, 110 patients, those are the patients from that period of time that had insurance claims that went to the hospital during that timeframe that we were analyzing the data. So, that's not all the patients that we work with, but those are the patients that we had data about because there were insurance claims associated with a hospital visit. So, this is a longitudinal. We don't drop anybody. We, even if, they become active or inactive. So, there might be times when their situation is essentially under control or managed, but whatever led them to having 60 ED visits in a six-month period is not, we, I mean, we're realistic, it's not always going to go away. So, we want to at least keep touch points and make sure that, you know, that individual's still having their needs met, that they haven't fallen through the cracks or something like that. So, they never discharge anyone from the program, but they may become inactive or visit them less and less. So, maybe three months and then they're fine, they stretch to nine months or a year.
And we want to track that, so nobody ever leaves the program. We want to track them if they become inactive for three or four, five years and then all of a sudden have some sort of relapse or change in life and come back into the system. We want to know about that. So, we have access to all of that. Nobody ever really truly graduates, they just maybe are less involved.
You said that you serve the whole county with this. Do you find it's predominantly in the city of Salisbury?
Yeah. So, we have, in order for it to operate in the county, the Salisbury Fire Department has MOUs with all 11 volunteer fire departments, so they can refer in. But the majority of the use of the program is in, is in the Salisbury Fire District, both city and county. Sure.
Great, great job.
Any other comments or questions from council? No. Who's mayor?
You know, ESA, which is the practice that has the telehealth, you know, the contract with the hospital, they are constantly under strain because of their, you know, their limits with regard to the waiting room. Do you guys get, I mean, when you guys bring people in, are you making an assessment as you're bringing them in, the potential you guys could treat them at the SWIFT level and not have to leave them there?
Yeah. So, that's, so our people, and I failed to mention, the program operates currently Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:30. So, nights and weekends, there's really not a decision. They automatically get taken to the hospital, but there is that decision, our providers can show up and whether the MDCN or the SWIFT team even responded with them, we have the ability to call for the SWIFT team to come to the scene, who can then say, no, they don't need to go to the hospital. And then relieve that crew to go back and treat the patient there or refer them to PT or OT or urology appointment or whatever. And all those relationships are already, you know, cemented and in place.
But to be clear, if they've already presented at the ED, we're not turning anyone away from the ED.
Yeah, right. Those protocols related to that.
But part of the, part of the program coordinator is every day he comes in, he reviews everybody who went into the, to the ED and see whether or not they were viable. And we also have a tracking mechanism in our medical reporting that our providers can say, if it's after hours, they can flag that call to say, hey, and then it flags him and he follows up the next business day with that patient who's been referred by us to see if they're fit. They do have to consent, it's not something we can force on them.
Yeah, right. Right.
I have a question. From the beginning of this program, do you see an increase or decrease in the need? Not just for the program, but for the people.
The people that I see more needs. I mean, housing is a huge issue, the lack of affordable housing, the amount of substandard housing is a huge issue, lack of transportation, the complexity of the patients and their medical needs, their conditions. We've got an aging population, we've got a poor population. So, I think their needs, the needs are greater now than when we began.
I agree. Absolutely.
Now, I looked at your numbers as Councilwoman DeShiel's did, and the numbers are not, well, they're not as high as, I guess, I would love to see them as far as, like, you had 20, I can't remember which one. Could you go back to the screen?
On the pre-post data?
Mm-hmm. My thing is, yeah. Not the money, I think it's one, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's not the, so that's a rate. So, that's not the whole raw numbers.
Okay.
So, that's the rate per 10, but it's out of that 100 or so patients.
Okay.
So, it's an average.
Well, I know it's a very successful program. We've seen it, you know, it's very successful and I know some people who have been a part of the SWIFT program as far as being patients. So.
And I would say a limiting factor kind of to the, to the number of people is the pure manpower. I mean, they're, they're a four-person on-duty team, Monday through Friday. There's more than four on the team, but at any one time, there's only two, two-person crews, so they can only touch so many people during.
Yeah, we would love this to be seven days, 24/7, and maybe one day we'll get there. And we would love to expand it beyond because we know it works. It's just a matter of resources and funding.
And this program started in?
2017.
2016, 17, something like that.
I know it was two, probably a year or two years after I became a county. This is a successful program, continuing.
Thank you so much for providing this update to us. We look forward to seeing you again. And if, in the interim, you, anything that you want to highlight, please use our email or call us. We'd love to hear about the great work you all are doing and thank you for being a part of the community.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
Yes, of course. All right. This time, we'll pivot to our city administrator, Andy Kitra, with a Hometown Heroes banner update.
Good evening, council. So, let's recap. We all met with the president.
The city administrator, just seeing no, no public comments relating to the SWIFT presentation, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Sorry.
Wonderful. So, we, a few weeks back, we had a presentation from interested stakeholders who came before you all. Following up on that meeting on September 9th, the county and the city and some stakeholders met in the county executive's office to discuss the Hometown Heroes program. And we are looking forward to move this forward immediately. What we have determined from that conversation is Eastern Shore Drive is going to be where we house the banners in Salisbury. We've identified at least 30 poles that'll be able to house the Hometown Hero banners. We're looking at doing a double-sided banner, but also a double-sided pole, so two banners per pole, which will allow us to have up to 60 people on that, on Eastern Shore Drive. That'll be year one, kind of as our pilot, and depending on interest, we will look to decide what we want to do after that, whether we expand the footprint or look at other options. We are working with our stakeholders. Nicole Bosman is the one who's kind of spearheading this. She has been part of the Delmar Hometown Heroes program. Just kind of as a note, a lot of the local municipalities have a Hometown Heroes program. So, this is the Salisbury's version. So, we're referring to it as the Salisbury Hometown Heroes program. Our goal would be to have this up and ready as early as Veterans Day of this year, to start promoting it. And then the goal of the program would be from Memorial Day until the following Veterans Day. So, late May until November of '25 would be when the banners are hung. The city has decided that it would contribute to the cost of installation of the banners, so labored to put up the banners and take them down. And then also, we'll outfit each one of the poles with the required bracket hardware to make sure that the banners are, you know, secured appropriately. Each individual who's interested in participating in the program will contribute to the purchase of their banner, and then that will be housed and held by a third party. We're still working through, I think, who is going to be kind of the steward of the finances, which organization's going to manage that. And I think we have selected a vendor who will be printing the banners, but I don't think that has completely been finalized. But very similar to the other municipalities who have this program, so very look and feel. So, we're excited to be part of that program. Then, once we have everything set up, our goal would be to help promote the program and the initiative and then, and then see who's interested. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. Any questions, comments?
I do.
Yep.
You're saying double-sided. So what do you mean by double-sided? Do you mean that two different banners are going up? Or do you mean that somebody else's banner has another, somebody else's picture on it?
So what I think is, it would be one pole each side, right?
No, that's not what he said.
Sure. So double-sided banner, meaning if you're going eastbound or westbound on it, it would be the same person?
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to add.
And, but then double-sided, I mean, if the pole's standing up, you'd have one kind of what I'd call street side and one sidewalk side. So you can have the same bracket. So it'd look like kind of flags on both sides. So then each pole would be able to have two.
Two flags.
Two flags, with, just one individual per flag, but on both sides of the banner. So depending on which direction, you'd see the same person. That allows the individual, because we were talking about it, the ownership of the banners for the individual who has, who's purchased the banner. If we had two different people on the banner, then it becomes an interesting dynamic, because you have two people who own kind of the same banner.
Okay. Let me ask another question. Now that I brought this to the city, why wasn't I included in this meeting?
I didn't organize the meeting. We were invited to the meeting. So I, you know, I apologize that you were not part of that meeting. But, you know, moving forward, you're more than welcome to help spearhead anything in any part of this conversation.
Now, it's kind of like a slap in the face. It's like somebody else is taking credit for somebody else's work, or something that somebody else has initiated to do. Nobody else thought of this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
No, I mean, you don't have to be sorry. I mean, I just don't, I just don't like sometimes the way things are being done. And things should be done right. If I brought this to the attention of the city, then I should have been a part of the, the solution or whatever was going on. Then again, we, we have somebody from Delmar, and Nicole Bosman, I have no problem, that's spearheading this for Salisbury. Then you're saying that you don't know who the person is going to do the banners, when I brought Miniman Press, Jeff Merritt here, because I want our monies to stay local. I don't want our monies to go to another state or city. I want our monies to stay here. And I think that's more than right. We should support our businesses.
Yeah, Jeff was in that meeting when we met, at the conversation. I'm not sure Jeff would be the one. He mentioned that Miniman probably wouldn't print these, but it would be one of the local vendors in Salisbury that's printed the banner.
Funny how he was there and I wasn't. Now, I'm mad. Yes, I am. I'm upset. I'm upset. I'm very upset. And y'all can take it any way you want to. I'm upset about it. And I have all the right in the world to be upset.
I sort of saw this as two different locations. I thought, you know, we were doing it there, but with this group, but that wasn't me, that we couldn't do it where you wanted to go.
So I think, if I could, if I could step in, because again, I didn't know about this, this meeting as well. And I think the one thing we're learning here from administration is that, again, we, we want to be a part of the processes for things. And so, again, it's kind of, you know, you're seeing the hurt in real time. But again, we've been consistently acting as, you know, from council, that, you know, we want to be a part of the process. So, you know, just a quick email or a phone call, that way that we can work through things in, in real time. So, and that's kind of what you're seeing. And so, again, I don't know.
Certainly wasn't our intention, that's for sure. I mean.
Well, I understand. But what I'm saying, you know, we've, I think, we've, we've made it extremely clear on a couple of different, you know, issues and things. So this is one thing. So I would suggest, and I would appreciate if, moving forward, Councilwoman Jackson can, can certainly be included on, on the meetings and a part of the process. I think it's only respectful, again, her work with the veterans. I mean, again, you know, again, you know, thank you all for being here. Thank you for your service. But, you know, Councilwoman Jackson reached out to these members and, and her, her work with, with the local, you know, VFW and the veterans is, is one that's commendable. So I'll leave you with that. And I think you hear very clearly that, moving forward, Councilwoman Jackson needs to be a part of this, this process. And I think it would be, it would be prudent to kind of dial it back a little bit and make sure that we're doing this, this as well. So I'll leave it to you all to, to plan that and to communicate with Councilwoman Jackson. But I would, I would, I would bring it back a little bit and, and make sure that it's a holistic process with the community in mind. And you will get that with your representative from this city council, who is elected to speak for the citizens, speak with the citizens of Salisbury.
Yeah, sound good. April, Councilwoman Jackson, I'll go ahead and forward you over the couple of communications we've had so far. I think we're still in the planning process, so we haven't moved too far ahead. So absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at this as if it were you, and you brought something to the council. Wouldn't you want to be a part of it? I'm quite sure you would. And I'm not, don't get, don't take this wrong, anybody out here. But you cannot do things and then eliminate the person who brings it to the table. You just eliminated me. And that's humiliating.
Thank you all. Any other council comments?
Uh-uh.
We'll move forward to public comments. And again, we look forward to bringing that. And I think that timeline of having it, you know, kind of published with Veterans' Day would be good. And of course, we look forward to seeing that in 2025, with Memorial Day coming up and with Veterans' Day. Well, our first public comment is Andra Roberts?
I'll go with sweet back.
Oh. Okay. All right. Thank you. Molly Heligoss?
Hello. I'm Molly Heligoss, Habitat for Humanity CEO. And super excited about the, the opportunity for the Hometown Heroes. And I'd like to invite Councilwoman Jackson, all the council, and the administration, and our veterans here, to our roundtable Season of Service that will be held on November 13th at the VFW 194. It's at 11:30 till 1 o'clock, lunch is included. And we are very excited to hear from you about how we can better partner with housing, healthcare, community interactions, and anything else that are the needs of the, of the veterans of our community. And so it is a free lunch, and we have a maximum of 75 people. So please reach out to Karen at Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County. Thank you very much.
What time was that, Molly?
11:30 to 1.
Thank you.
That's November 13th, VFW 194, next to Ugly Pie. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other public comments, we'll move forward. Next, we'll hear from Assistant Chief of EMS, Chris Truitt, on approving a budget amendment to the FY25 general fund budget. Good afternoon, Mr. Truitt.
Afternoon.
Yes.
How's everybody?
How are you? Thanks.
Not bad. All right. So I'm assuming you saw the ordinance come forth. The fire department sold a surplus of portable radios that we weren't able to utilize anymore on gov deals. It came to just under 17,000. And as luck would have it, shortly thereafter, the fire pump at Station 1 died on us, and it is just about the same amount. So that surplus will allow us to offset the cost of the fire pump. So there's no real change in the budget, other than the money going in and then going right back out.
Wow.
Yes.
Let's just keep replicating this throughout the rest of the, the rest of the fiscal, the fiscal year.
Rather bring in and use it for projects than a fire pump, but yeah.
Yes. Counsel, any comments or questions?
No.
All right. Well, we appreciate that. Thank you. And seeing no public comments, we'll move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. So, council, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, we just got so excited about the money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Doesn't take much to make us happy.
Yes. All right. Next, we're here from Captain John Felk on a budget amendment for the FY25 general fund budget. And it looks like the rest of the command team as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know what to think. We, we walked up and everybody else walked out.
Uh-oh.
Guess we'll take that. I see we have two things.
Yes, we do. Yeah, we'll go ahead. Yep.
Which one would you like?
Let's go over the, the.
Blue herring.
The hot and pop.
4,000.
Yes, the blue herring.
So the, the blue herring, actually, this is good news. The, the amount of money we've got from the, the donor, it was actually $500 more than we'd accepted back in September. So we're going to give $500 more to cover, offset the cost of the hot pop for the K-9 vehicle. So I'll take that as, not often I say it, and I come to you with good news, but more good news.
Thank you.
And I had the chance to meet your, your newest, or one of the newest K-9 dogs at the Folk Festival. So he was excited little guy.
Yep.
Well, not little, but sorry, he was excited guy.
Oh, you got the little guy.
Yes.
The K-9s are a lot more user-friendly than they used to be as well.
Yes, yes. Counsel, any questions or comments?
None.
Seeing no public comments, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, great. Thank you. All right. Chief, move forward to the enforcement officers.
Okay.
Is it next?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So actually, what, what this is, is just amending the existing city code. It's not really increasing the amount of officers that we have. But what it is doing, it's allowing other department heads within the city, authorizing them. For instance, the example is the fire chief and the director of HCDD would now be able to, they've been authorized to have whoever they designate within their departments to be able to enforce certain parking violations. For instance, a good example, this would be the fire chief would now be able to authorize some of his staff to issue parking citations. A good example would be fire lanes. So the fire marshals, it would make sense that they would be able to, during the course of their travels, would be able to enforce fire lanes, in addition to whatever they might see, even a handicap violation or so forth. This would exclude meter areas downtown. But what it allows us to do is have extra eyes and ears in some of the areas that we, we find quite frequently, we get complaints on, in particularly fire lane and handicap. But in particularly fire lane is probably the most prevalent. So that would be an example of that. It's not excluded to HCDD or the fire. I mean, any department that's authorized by, by me under the code would be able to do it. But primarily, the, the arms of, that traditionally see some of these violations frequently, would be able to actually go out and assist. And that would also free up our officers on some occasion to address some of the more pressing matters throughout the city. So this kind of offset, it's a force multiplier, you might say, as far as the amount of city manpower that's been able to help us address these concerns. And just to let you know, starting back in July to September, we received 478 calls for service parking issues. Some of those were through the Citizen Reporter program, the online. Some of them were self-generated, and also just called in to headquarters from our citizens. That's just July to September. April to June, 126 and 89 called in by citizen, and 104 January through March. A lot of this is driven also by time of year and weather conditions and so forth. But that certainly is, speaks to the level of complaints that we get on parking. In addition to all this, our staffing numbers are increased. So we would like to say that we will see an increased presence in a lot of these areas to be able to address some of these issues in-house as well. So.
Chief question for you. So with, is, is this just the first step? I'm assuming, so for, for any of those designees, and I know for HCDD and the fire department first, will there be training that will be allocated for either department head or a certain designee first? And then second, will we know the type, the specific types of violations that will, that will be permitted for these enforcement officers to, to delve out?
So there already has been training. We already scheduled training for those members that were identified by their department heads. As part of that training was how to complete it, what falls within the code, what is considered parking, and what is considered stopping. And then, of course, where to obtain the books that are actually used. These are civil enforcement, so they're civil enforcement-type books as a form of parking citation. As it relates to which ones will, they will be allowed to enforce, they can enforce across the board, with the exception of the meter parking spots. Those are generally done by Salisbury Police Department or the Parking Authority, which falls under the Department of, or Public Works Department.
Correct.
Bill Ops.
Perfect. And so my, the reason why I asked the question is, and I think we should do some sort of PSA, is just to let people know, again, hey, we will be, you know, looking out for these with a little, you know, in depth a little more. So if you can kind of, like, maybe the top five or top 10, and we do some PSAs, again, things that people already know. But I think it would be good for us to just say, hey, I would make sure that you, you know, not park in fire lanes, because there's going to be extra people that are on the lookout for, for those things. And then now, this is, there's a citation that may be attached to that, just so we're not out just, you know, slapping tickets on there. Because again, our, our goal is to not have those lanes blocked, and not this to be a revenue generator. So if, if we could do some PSAs to the public, that would be good.
Absolutely. And I will tell you, I can give you those numbers. But our, our goal is not to issue more. Our issue is, is to gain compliance. And there is a lot more warnings that get issued than there are citations. But I would like to mention, we do have members of the, of the, actually, the fire chiefs here, and members of the fire marshals department within. So if, if you would like any additional information as to what they see, that would, that would help them as well, help the city with any enforcement action, that's.
Chief, do you have anything you want to add?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to echo what they're saying. Fire lanes being blocked is definitely a problem. We've actually had some incidents at some of the more frequent places where our ambulance or fire engine has not been able to approach a patient or approach a scene due to a vehicle that's got nobody in it. And we've actually had some where they forced our ambulance or engine to move or park in a different location, and then an individual's backed out of a legal parking spot and hit one of our vehicles. So it's, it's a tremendous problem. I echo everything that the police chief said.
Idiots.
And again, our goal is to, some departments within the city that it wouldn't necessarily, like, for instance, not to pick on anybody, but wastewater treatment, probably wouldn't make sense to issue. A lot of parking citations do with the type of work they do.
Sure.
But of course, HCDD, and then, of course, the fire department, and so forth, it makes, it makes a bit of sense to allow them to, the opportunity to be able to, and help us enforce this.
Sure. Counsel, any other, I was going to say.
I was going to say.
You want us to have a booklet, you know?
Sign me up. Sign me up. You'd be the first one.
Your training, the council's training is, the council's training is scheduled for next week.
I'm there.
There you go.
I'm there.
You heard them volunteer. You didn't hear, uh, you didn't hear me.
I see it all the time, and it's so disturbing.
Yeah, the fire lanes are really problematic. People are using them as, as part of the parking lot.
Yep.
So it's kind of challenging.
Sorry, Angela, you and I can take the training, April. You ready?
Yeah, yeah.
Good. All right. Seeing no other council comments and public comments, council, do we have consensus to move this forward?
Absolutely.
Great. All right. Thank you all. Yeah, we did.
Thank you.
All right. We'll invite our Arts Business and Culture Director, Mr. Alan Swager, Swager, and Infrastructure and Development Director, Nick Voitick.
Everything at this point. My wife says the best, swagger like tiger.
Since we're keeping, we're keeping it light. So it's on my, my agenda sheet, my, my sheet, and it's in parentheses, I. So then, but that tripped me up. I would have just said your name correctly if it wasn't. But I was like, I, swag, oh, Swager. Yeah, there it is. So, all right. We'll pivot to you all to, to walk us through the, the additional fees that we're going, or the adjustments to the fee schedule.
Sure, yeah. Just some additional fees for your consideration, the FY25 fee schedule. First of which being the Salisbury Zoo. A preface with, these aren't new fees. These are fees that existed, but funding used to go to the zoo commission. Now that that relationship has changed.
Yes.
They're no longer in the operation of the zoo. We still have a lot of interest for people you want to utilize in the facility. So we're simply moving these fees into our schedule, so we can actually charge for it. And then, the ideas.
And then I have one fee. Thank you. For development plans, when a comprehensive development plan comes in, there's one fee for the planning commission aspects, all the presentations, another fee for the actual engineering, stormwater reviews. That's a $2,000 fee that exists, plus, I think, $50 an acre, something like that. This would be a fee. Those plans basically are good for two years. We have a general note on the approved plans that say that the plans are good for two years and can be renewed by application to the department at the department's discretion. And something I've noticed now, since I've been here, when we do get those plans to come in for the renewal, it does
when we do get those plans to come in for the renewal, it does take quite a bit of man hours to go through them. It's not the whole in-depth engineering review and checking every single thing, but a lot of administrative work, seeing if title blocks on the cover have changed, see if the general notes have changed or need to be cut out and replaced, checked to make sure that survey plots and things are still the same and, uh, correct. So that's been my experience so far. It's been quite a bit of work, so I thought this would be, uh, helpful to, you know.
Charge, yeah.
Okay. Um, the only, uh, before we pivot to counsel questions, I just want to, Mr. Swager, if you could just, uh, underscore that again, we're not making any, um, changes or, or alterations or additions to, uh, any park fees or, you know, Unity Square. I know that was a, you know, that was a conversation and thought and, or some buzz, but we're not making any additions or, um, uh, to the Unity Square to any park fee at this time.
Yeah, not, not in this round.
Okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted us to, us to, to have it, make it known and so, so it's out in, in the record. So counsel, any questions or comments?
Yes, go ahead, April.
Wait a minute. My mind just drifted off a minute when he was asked the question. There aren't any fees for Unity Square as of now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a plan for that? The reason I'm asking and I'm guessing Councilwoman, uh, Jackson is as well, uh, we all received a letter from a concerned, um, person in the community regarding the use of, um, Unity Square with, uh, with or without permission, with or without application. I don't know what the, the process is. I'm just aware of this, you know, seeing the fee schedule for the, not first time, but during the budget hearing and fees, that kind of thing. But, um, I don't know if we need to entertain the idea of, and I don't know how I would do it, Alan, you'd have a better feel for that, you and Nick, wait, Alan. An application so that it just doesn't become a free for all. Um, the person that wrote this letter was very concerned, uh, that it became a political, um, issue this weekend and, uh, that in itself, forget the political piece, just somebody should not be allowed by the letter to just show up with everything that they need to put on, a performance, a show, music, whatever, without at least clearing it with somebody so that there's an awareness that this is being used for that purpose. And the community is aware of that. So same old thing, if you don't agree with something, you don't go. But, um, at least a permission type thing, because it is public. It is public property.
Yeah. Um, that was proposed in this. Um, it was kind of tabled for more discussion. Um, the purpose, everything you said already exists.
Okay.
Unity Square is the exception as it stands right now. One is, it's very new, so leaving it open to public use for a small amount of time that people would enjoy the park was important. Right now, it is the most popular sought-after space. So I, I completely agree with you that there is a process. Fifty dollars, two hundred dollars, five hundred, it doesn't really matter what the fee is. What matters is that it gets in queue for the process of being properly vetted, which means it's an application process. It goes through the vetting, it goes through the walkthroughs, it goes through the due diligence.
Which it should, yeah.
So that's, that's where I left off.
Is the assumption that if they're not paying a fee, they can't rent the park? I mean, in other words, you can go to the, the Games Park, you can go to the amphitheater, I think you can rent both of those. So they could do it there if they wanted to, but we were just gonna take Unity Square off the.
So. Yeah, I could, you can jump in. And I, I may invite our law enforcement guys because they're back there. So, and there's a bigger conversation on just park rentals. April, we've been doing this for almost two decades now. Um, people cannot just show up someplace and mobilize and throw a party, bring tents, m- music, et cetera. But there are rules when it comes to write to assemble and write to protest or to do things. I asked Chief to come up here because, but it's still a, an application. So the use of public space for private use is, must be vetted and typically there's a fee associated with it, but we need to know who's using what and who is organized use of that space. So, um, and if it's not appropriately, um, applied for, vetted and, um, and we don't know what's going on, we have the ability to, you know, disperse the crowd, et cetera. But, um, the goal is to not necess, I'm, I'm going through the, or the chatter we had over the weekend with the activity. And I don't believe that was a, uh, an activity that was approved in that same capacity. But we do see that from time to time where people will go into a, a city asset, a park or something and have an organized activity kind of off book. Um, so when we find that out, we just need to know about it and see if we can get up with the organizing and say, okay, you need, there's a whole process to that. But specifically with Unity Square and that being a, um, uh, an asset that is public and right in the middle of town, we decided to not go ahead and fund it this time with a fee associated with it, but, um, it maybe comes up for further discussion when we're doing fee schedules next year as, as we get about a year of this underneath our belt. Um, I asked if Chief, if you have anything else to add on people's ability to, you know, organize, assemble, et cetera.
And before we go to, because I, we're, we're drifting.
Drifting off the topic.
Extreme, or, you know, way off topic from the, the fee schedule. I just want us to, to maybe one sentence, because again, I know that was the question that came in and just to address that. Again, uh, there is a process right now to sort, to, to permit for a gathering at any space, um, whether it's a city park or it's, you know, on the street, there, there is a process for that to gather. Again, that's, that's, that's set in stone. So it's a matter of venue. Uh, we're, the, the, the question came about Unity Square, which is no different than the park, which is why it was tabled. It was tabled to, uh, not have that be in addition to the, um, the fee schedule because you can't rent out the whole Salisbury City Park, but it's, it's the same, it's in relation. So it was just, it, it was gonna get too, uh, logistical there. So Chief, you want to add anything more to that, but I don't want to further complicate, uh, the, the fee schedule here.
No, the, the only thing I would add is that our staffing, um, events that are going on that can be vetted out affects our staffing levels. And of course, if there's an event that we evaluate, um, with Alan's group and we evaluate and then it requires additional manpower, there is a cost associated with that occasionally. It depends, sometimes, sometimes it's not, but that would be the only thing I would add is just not only expenses to the city, but also safety, having enough folks to address whatever events going on and the safety, um, associated with that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you. So that is in the pipeline to, um, permits, that kind of thing, like other, um.
Again, it's perm, it's, there's a, I want us to underscore that because I know it's, it's gonna get money.
Yeah.
Right now, there is a permit in place to, if I want to gather at any public place that is owned by the city, there is a permit right now.
Okay.
Can we, hold on, I want to, I want us to say yes or?
Yes.
Yes.
There is a permitting process and there are fees associated with all of those.
Already set in stone. Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to, uh, slow it down because it's already, so if you want to gather at the city park, you can apply for a permit right now. If you want to gather at Unity Square, technically you can apply for a permit. It's just that that space is not rented for you holistically. So anyone else can gather in any of your space. Well, that's what the complication.
Basically, because it's like twenty-five people or more, you have to get a permit. Am I right?
It can be under twenty.
Yeah, under twenty.
It's private versus public.
Yeah, you get a permit, but you cannot take over the whole park because the park is a public park.
Yep.
Yeah.
Can't privatize it, correct?
The permit process allows for, as, as.
Us to know.
Us to know, and we're making sure that insurances are covered and staffing is covered, but also you're not duplicating events in one space.
Yes.
So it allows, what you don't want in Unity Square is fifteen birthday parties showing up the same weekend, right? So, I, I mean, I think that we need to think through that process a little more, um, as we see to gauge this interest. It'll slow down, it's gonna get colder out. But I'd say in the spring, we should have something, a little more formal place.
Good, thank you.
The permits are separate from fees. You have the permits and fees already established and for Unity Square, they still need a permit, but we're not dealing with fees yet. Is that the understanding?
Yeah.
Okay.
To privatize it, because.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's, that's why we, it was on there and we pulled it off because it was, it, it just didn't work out, but we appreciate you all for, for that. And, and the public can look forward to, to, to something with that a little bit sooner. Uh, seeing no other public comments, uh, counsel, would you have consensus to move this, this, um, this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you all. All right, we'll move forward to our city administrator, Andy Kitzrow, for a F Y twenty-five general fund budget and parking fund budget, um, amendment.
Sure, counsel. Um, what you have before you is a recommendation from, um, our office with the input of, um, different department heads. It's a budget amendment because we're modifying our authorized positions count. Um, so we have different positions that we're looking to modify their grade and/or title of those positions. In your memo and in the proposed legislation shows the breakdown of those positions. It's, um, sixteen total that will be modified. Um, and it goes across multiple different departments and that's based off of the org. But I can drill down on any positions. If you have any questions specific about it, we've already talked about this a little bit. Um, typically, we reserve this during our budget cycle. But we had a lot of vacancies, a lot of transitions that happened post-July. Um, so we wanted to go ahead and clean up, um, our authorized position counts with some vacancies and some retirements that are coming on, just to make sure, and some market rate adjustments that we saw that were appropriate at this time. So I'm open for questions and comments.
That, uh, the one that we, we had some discussion on that, so, so we, th- this is the latest and greatest?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other? Seeing no other, no public comments, counsel, we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, great. All right, thank you. All right, and we, uh, we'll stay on, on with, with you all. First, any administration updates and comments?
Um, starting this weekend is, uh, things are starting to kick off at the zoo. Uh, we've got Halloween happenings this weekend, next weekend, followed by a couple, um, additional events, which we'll be talking about each council meeting. Um, but people think that because the Folk Festival is behind us, that Alan's team is getting less busy. That is not the truth. October's back to probably the busiest month of the year, so, you know, continued kudos to his team and the support staff to continue to make all of those activities, um, you know, get kickoff. And then I wasn't here at the last council meeting on the twenty-third, but I do want to give another shout out to all of our volunteers and all of our city folks who were part of the Maryland Folk Festival, helping out or just enjoying it. Another successful year and the weather held out. So really happy that that happened. For all those who came out, thanks for participating. And those are my only couple of comments.
Mayor?
Uh, I just want to remind people, we have the, uh, Beer Festival coming up, uh, Pepperdine Park, my favorite topic. So, uh, yeah, when is it, uh?
This weekend, I, no, next weekend.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so beyond that was good. I think that beautiful weather, get out and see the Unity Square come downtown. So that's all I got.
Good. Thank you. Uh, we'll start with counsel vice president.
Uh, I just want to talk, uh, shortly and quickly about, um, the amount of litter in our city. Um, just, there is a different, I, in the last couple of years, it's just, I've never seen so much just disregard for just throwing things out of your, your car window. And I'm talking about fast food wrappers, diapers, half gallon of milk, um, half bottles of Gatorade. I mean, just whatever, just trashes everywhere. I've never seen it this bad. Um, I would really like people to, the city doing a campaign, keep it clean. I don't know if we can get, can partner with the scouts, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, um, to do a citywide cleanup day or something. And make it important to, to, to stop this littering. It is just unbelievable. Um, and, um, that's all I can really say about that.
Real quick, litter committee is really working with the county and the city. We're doing, I think, a pretty good job. They've got a huge amount of volunteers and we're trying to corral where we see the persistent problems, like to your point. You got, you, your point is well taken.
Uh, get, get the county crowd out there to Johnson and, um, Mount Olive Road. It is horrendous. Uh, it's just horrendous. I can't even walk my dogs down those roads. There's, um, the, the, the amount of garbage on the side of the roads, the beer cans, the tin, the metal, the broken plastic, half a gallon of milk thrown everywhere. It's, I, I can't even have my dogs, um, go near it. I, I just, I, I just, it was just terrible, terrible. But, um, and just a reminder, just to, you know, donate blood and plasma if you're healthy enough and consider being an organ donor. Uh, save a life. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, vice president. Uh, Councilwoman Jackson?
Well, I have some very, very, I don't know how it's gonna be taken, but I'm just gonna put it out here. Statistics on hiring practices for minorities. Our city, the city of Salisbury is very diverse. I don't see it in our city government. I don't see it in our city jobs. And it's very upsetting to me that when I hear people say they apply for jobs for the city of color and they don't get them. So what I want to see is the statistics on the hiring practices, statistic on how many people of color are applying for jobs, how many are hired, um, how many are hired within the city of Salisbury administration. Um, because I'm, we need to, it, it doesn't reflect. I have said this ever since I've been on the council. We're living in a very diverse society now. And I know for the life of me that someone of color could be getting some of these jobs and they're not. Everybody's not a criminal, every, every person of color is not a criminal. There are some very well-versed and educated people of color. So I'm, was, I want to know why. Why aren't we hiring? We've had three African-American people who were hired for the city and fired. And fired since I've been on my tenure. From what I understood, they were hired in good faith and fired, never had a discussion about it, never knew because it's a personnel issue. But every African-American that we've had that has been in position has been terminated. And I find it to be a problem and something seriously needs to be looked into. So Mayor, Andy, I'm asking you, I need to have something from, I need, the whole council needs to see something from our human, um, resources in reference to how we're hiring. And how many people of color are applying for these jobs and why they're not getting them. I'm very disappointed in this, been disappointed for quite some time.
Yeah. I think the statistics are, are desperate. They're not great. Uh, but it's been going on for fifteen years. I mean, they've been flat. I mean, they've been the same is what I mean. Nothing different since I've been here. Um, but we'll certainly comply with your request.
Yeah, I, I, I would love to see, I would love for the whole council to see it.
Yeah.
Because something, something's wrong here. And if it's something that is not being done by the city, then the city needs to have some kind of recourse. Something needs to be done. And if it's because people are not being hired, because I've actually heard some people of color say, they're not gonna hire me anyway. And you know, that's sad when you hear people of color say that to you. I say, why didn't you apply for the job? They're not gonna hire me. I'm like, why? You're very educated. You, you have the skills. You have the background. They're not gonna hire me. And this is how people feel. Because this is what they see. And people should not be made to feel like that. So like I said, I would love to see some information on how people are being hired here, who's filling out these applications, how many people of, um, color are applying for these jobs and why they're not being hired. I mean, I don't need to be in detail why, but I just need, we need to know. I need to know. I don't know about anybody else up here, but I really need to know. I really, I, I'm just, I'm looking at this right now. Look, look, tell them how to look at yourselves.
I'm gonna keep my cool.
And it's no offense to any of you, because I'm quite sure that you all got your jobs the right way, but it, it, it's, it's sad to me. For how many years I've been sitting here by, for how many years? Ten, nine years sitting here by myself until Deshaun came on or Hardy Rudleson was on. And it is, we've got to do better. We have to have better practices than we do. We have to, we've got to, we've got to, I mean, you've got to make the city look like the city looks. And that's just me. And I, I do want to mention that, I know y'all probably say, she's gonna come back and my God, but it is what it is. This is things that have been on my mind. Um, I'd like to thank the V F W Post one oh one five nine and the American Legion Post sixty-four for attending, um, the work session and reference, and continuously coming to support, um, the efforts of the hometown banner flags. Um, I'd also. to support, um, the efforts of the hometown banner flags. Um, I'd also like to mention, and the families that have showed up, because there were some family members that showed up as well. Um, and I'd like to mention that, um, the VFW 10159 is having a trunk and treat, um, October the 29th. Um, and it will be from 68. And it's free to everyone. Free. So if you're, wanna come, just, we welcome you to come with open arms. Nothing that we do is closed to the public. We want everybody to come in and enjoy themselves. And I know last year, we had quite a bit in there. And I know we were probably overcrowded to a certain extent, but it's when I, it's, it's nothing overcrowded when you got kids and they're enjoying themselves and having fun. And they did. So this is what we want to do. And this is what we want to bring to our community, enjoyment for families and children and youth. So please come out, October the 29th, um, from 68. It's a trunk and treat. It's an inside-outside event, but if we have inclement weather, it will be totally inside. Everything is free. Food, everything free. Drinks, everything free. So come on out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman DeShue?
Hi, three things. Um, first of all, there was a small sinkhole on West College and of course, my street again, where we had the dip. And it was called, my neighbor called in the morning. It was last week, I guess. The city utilities were out there by lunchtime, if not before. Took care of it absolutely perfectly. And I just think they need credit where credit is due. And they were just, it was wonderfully fixed perfectly. Um, I have a request. I'm not sure how I go about this. I do know that we were sent a list of, um, suggested book titles to understand the TIF. And if, if it would be helpful, it would be for me. And if, just tell me the protocol. If we all had more information on that, not all the books, but if, um, Mr. Kitzrow, um, with your experience, if you wanted to figure out which one would be the most informative, um, if we would have access to that, that would be great, I think. Might be helpful. I'm just speaking personally, but maybe helpful for all of us since we're all treading these new, um, not conditions, but revisiting the different, um, incentives that we're thinking about offering. And lastly, uh, flu shots. Think of October, flu shots, and so that none of us are sick.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeShue. And I know that, um, we as a city, we, we did hire a consultant and we've had conversations. So we'll make sure we bring that back and that you get the resources that the city has expensed. And we're, we're gonna start those conversations back again and bringing back that consultant. So thank you for us, uh, definitely underscoring that conversation. Uh, just a couple of things here. Um, so I have, and the council's been, been made aware of, uh, an incident that occurred in, in Salisbury with, you know, regarding, um, some members of our police department. And again, we have seen that. We heard it. Conversations are being had. Um, and so please don't take our, um, our, our lack of communication from the lack of conversations, but, uh, we are discussing it and, um, more will come soon. But, um, you know, thank you all in the community that have reached out, that, that have called, uh, texted and to ensure that we're having the conversations. But do know that, uh, we are conversing, we're, we're talking about it. Um, and, uh, you know, those things, you know, hurt when it's your city, but, um, I have full confidence in, uh, the persons who are in our departments and that we hold the people accountable in our community and that we, uh, do what's right. So thank you all in the community as, as, you know, for, for holding us accountable and look forward to continuing those conversations. Um, we are in October and again, uh, it is the best month of the year, you know, no, no, uh.
Your birthday.
Yeah. Reason why. But I just want to highlight a couple of, um, you know, things of, of, you know, when it's a national month, but only because, uh, of some of these, um, you know, things here are of relation to, uh, you know, me and, and members of my families. Of course, as everyone knows, it's National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and, and that is quite important. So, you know, again, if you, um, if, you know, get your screenings, consult your doctors, because again, hopefully I want us to make sure we find that cure. Um, October 10th is World Mental Health Day. Again, make sure you're taking care of who you are as a person. Reach out to someone. You are needed as a person and you are loved. Uh, National ADHD Awareness Month, National Down Syndrome Awareness Month, National Physical Therapy Awareness Month, uh, Sudden Infant Death Syndrome Awareness Month. Um, so, and National Depression Screening Day is October 2nd, 7th. That was, uh, just yesterday. So a couple of those things. Again, reach out to someone. Um, but, uh, it's, there's no, uh, reason why. Again, those are, are all health, um, uh, you know, centric things. And so, um, you cannot be of help to anyone else unless you help yourself. So, um, I will leave you all with that. Thank you all. Thank, again, all the, the presenters and persons that were here. Uh, we look forward to seeing you next time. And again, October 28th, we will not have a meeting by the 21st. We will have a work session and legislative session. Thank you.